Hi there, everybody. Today is Tuesday, September 10th, 2024. The time is 6:00 PM. We're here for the regular session of the Capella City Council. We do have a quorum present, so I'm calling the meeting to order. We will be convening into executive session in the first-floor conference room. At the end of the executive session, I'll come out and announce that we're joining work session, at which time the public is invited and encouraged to join us. Thank you very much. Good afternoon. The time is 6:21 PM. We have adjourned from executive session, and we're moving into work session in the first-floor conference room. The public is encouraged and invited to join us. Time is 6:23. We're moving into work session. We have three items on the agenda. Item A is discussion regarding the agenda. Does anybody have any questions on the agenda for tonight, consent or otherwise? Oh!
Yeah, Jim has not come back.
Oh, maybe he knows he has another fight.
We have, we do have a quorum.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're good.
See if you can find him. Since we didn't have any, well, if, if he has comments, we can come back to him later. Item B is discussion regarding a new community health and wellness initiative. This is my item, and it's not new. It's actually kind of old. But what got me started thinking about this was several things. One, you know, we just got voted the fifth best place to live in the country, and it got me thinking about, so what don't we do? Well, you know, it's easy to come about with what we do do. We have a wonderful trail system. We have wonderful recreational facilities. We have a wonderful library. We have a core. We have a biodiversity center. We have hiking trails. We have biking trails. We have a lot of, as Mike likes to say, we have a lot of stuff. And it's all for the right reason, you know? Then you have to look at, what do we not have? Well, we don't have an auditorium. We don't have a golf course, although I hear there is one for sale. Comment noted, Mr. City Manager. But, you know, we've got a lot of things out there. And I go to the gym three times a week, and I work out. And I just do it because, but there's a lot of people that don't. So it got me to thinking about, is there something that we should be or could be doing? And the thing that happened was we were challenged as a city back in February, March to, with against South Lake and Keller, to do a fitness expo. And we came in third. And part of it was, we didn't have a really good way of getting the word out. We weren't really able to mobilize. And I don't know the best way to put it. So I asked Brianna to kind of give a little history on what we had done in the past in this area. And anyway, the program back then was called Living Well in Capella. So I'll let Brianna kind of take it from there.
Right. Thank you, Mayor. So from a historical perspective, and I think there are several people in this room that can speak to it. But I was trying to think back on the exact year. It was probably around 2009 that we started to have conversations. At the time, Clay was the city manager. And we started to think about six pillars for the Living Well in Capella community. And the six pillars were the mental, emotional, physical, spiritual, nutrition, and social parts to that. And at that time, we were trying to think about, what could we do as a community to really be holistically the best place to live? And knowing that one of the reasons, one of the many reasons that citizens moved to Capella is our schools. So we knew that we wanted schools to be a part of it. And we also wanted to make sure that we leveraged our resources, which a lot of that was like our parks, our park system, our trail system, which then led to the 2030 plan of making sure that our trails connected and that our parks, you know, were used for, by the citizens, and that we had the soccer field. And so there was a lot of pieces to that puzzle. And one of the, I guess, I was trying to think of kind of the main person that came and spoke to us at the time was Todd Withthorne. And he was working for the Cooper Clinic. And he came and helped, living as far as a citizen of Capella, he was like, I'd be happy to help. There's a lot of data in this space. And, you know, kind of what do we want to do as a community? So at the time, we put together kind of like a committee. And it included the schools. We went to all the different facilities, like YMCA, the Core. We wanted businesses to be involved. So we had like Herb Family Wellness. We had Los Polines Medical Center, since they do a lot with our fire department. So we started to bring people to the table and talk about, you know, what does this committee want to do? How do we start to implement these six pillars? And how do we really become a healthy community? And what does that mean? And so we also started to look to see there was an opportunity to maybe partner with a hospital or look and see how we could get some of that data. Because we knew there was already a lot of good things happening, but how could we build that partnership? I'll say, one of the challenges was the cost, right? So how much money did we want to invest in this? And what was that, like, what did the results look like? The other part of it was, did we want this to be a city-run committee? Or did we want it to eventually be maintained by the Y or some other third party or a combination thereof? So 2009, 2010, 2011, then at some point along the way, we shifted our focus. And at that time, we then went to a, a different committee that looked like, let's look at these city challenges, right? And that was when we did, I don't even know what the city challenges, do you remember?
It's Time Texas Community Challenge.
Yes, but Time Texas, yes, there you go. And so we did a lot of that, and we wanted to, to then be known, right? As kind of like, how do we get the word out? How do we get everyone to participate? What does that look like? And so things kind of shifted. We had the facilitator who comes to our retreat.
Randy.
Randy came in and started to also chat with us. And then I don't know exactly what happened. I think I was on and off of council around that time. But all that to say is, there was also a part of that that was a conversation around policies. Like, does this committee come before the council and recommend changes in policies? At the time, we talked about being, having a non-smoking ordinance. So I don't know how many people know that, but we don't have a non-smoking ordinance. So, and some cities, there was grant money around that. So did we want to do something like that? At the time, we were looking at no cellphone use on the roads. And I'll, yes. And then the, the state ended up doing something around that for, you know, school districts and then beyond that. So a lot of it was, what do we want to be known for? And how do we want to promote a healthy community? And it's ironic, because when the mayor messaged me about speaking on just the, the history of it and having seen this on our agenda, it really excited me because this is something that, well, one, I'm personally passionate about. But the other one is, like, we're doing so many great things. And how do we now, even post-COVID, and knowing that there are so many challenges from a health perspective along all these six pillars, how can we promote that in our community? So that's a little bit of the history. And a lot of people that were involved, we had a lot of great people like Maureen and Sally and Ed that were, you know, part of this initiative as well. And they helped move the, that challenge. And so there's been a lot of great things. How can we get that back up and running?
Thank you. So one of the things that I keep thinking about, you know, is why do I go out and work out? Well, I think each one of us has a different reason. I basically want to see my granddaughter grow up. So that's, I'm, I'm being very selfish in that area. But, you know, I hope everybody has the same kind of feeling about your future or their future. Couple of things happened over the last few months. And I was just talking to Councilmember Matthew. I was down at Texas Children's Health, and they are rabid to help out. They want to help something. And it dawned on me that we do have resources that are available to us. You know, the, the different health networks are more than willing to participate. I don't know whether that's going to be financially. I know it's through in-kind donations. They're willing to sponsor events. You know, the downside to this is it's not a current initiative that we have on our 2040 plan. I don't know why it's not. It probably should have been. Maybe just got lost. I, I'm sure we could find some way to, to, to put it in some area when you start thinking about community health and, and, uh, community support. But anyway, what I would like to do and propose, or what I would like to do is appoint a committee, a subcommittee, to take this on as a topic and come back before the council at our winter retreat and make a, a proposal, or I'm not sure what the committee is going to present. Clearly, the council needs to give a go, no-go to whatever that is. So it's going to be, end up being this council's decision. That would allow staff to have some direction for their work plan for next year. So we're not talking about doing anything immediate. This is going to be a, you know, if we're going to do it, we're going to do it well. I do want the committee to come back with some type of framework and our budget, what we think it's going to look like, what we think it's going to cost. You know, I don't know if this is going to be like Brianna was talking about, whether it's, I don't think it's going to be a commission that we formally appoint. It may be more like the Allies Interfaith Group that is a group. It could be like the CPAC Committee that gets together and meets. I don't know what that, I need this committee to, to look at what other cities are doing in the area. I'd like to understand what's going on around us and come back with a reasonable recommendation for this council to consider at our winter retreat. Yes, sir.
So as, at that time, in Living Well in Capella, I was the Chamber of Commerce liaison to that group. And so I spent, I want to say about a part of two years, three years, something like that, on that committee. I would love to be a part of, of this. So I think I could bring some perspective on the, on the inside of that committee as, as what was going on. So I'd, I'd be more than happy to participate in this.
I would like to point out that we do have Councilmember Walker back with us. So Jim, sorry, we lost you there for a minute. Ramesh.
I'm happy to be part of the committee, Mayor.
Okay, I can, Subcommittee can, and Brianna?
I'd like to be on it. And then before I forget, I also wanted to give a shout out to Tracy, because you were a big part of this too, when we were looking at being a blue zone. And so we, if I'm on this committee, we would also pick her brain, because she was a big part of that as well.
I also would like to recruit her.
And Jessica. As I was looking at what they were looking for, the nods and cherry, yeah.
So I think I've got the council subcommittee. Can I infringe upon Tracy to be a staff?
Do you mind? Of course.
You can ask me, and I will appoint a staff member.
Congratulations, you've been following.
Happens to be Tracy.
All right. I don't have any direct guidance on, you know, what the committee, I need you guys to go out and, and, I don't like guided discovery, but that's going to kind of be what this is.
Okay.
Go out, survey, take a look, see what other cities are doing, and come back with a recommendation. Anybody have any questions or comments? Mark, were, were you on council when the Living Well in Capella was going on?
Oh, absolutely.
What year did it end? I don't remember.
Pre-COVID.
I want to say sixteen.
Was it that late?
No, that was right, because when I came back on in 2015, so it was getting started, that started in like 2009. I stepped down in 2011 or so. I came back in 2015. That was when we had the, when we had Maureen, Sally, and Ed doing a lot, yeah.
So it's been about eight, eight years? Eight, nine, seven, eight?
Yeah.
Okay. If you have any questions, give me a holler, but I'll let you guys manage your time. And thanks for volunteering, Tracy.
Yeah, thank you, Tracy.
All right. Jim, we covered consent, agenda item A, discussion of agenda items in your absence. Did you have anything that you wanted to ask about?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will move on to item C, which is presentation of the 25 work plan. Ms. Leach?
Thank you, Mayor. I have some hard copies in case you all would prefer to look at a hard copy instead of your computer. Get them right to my heart.
I'm good on digital.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I am here tonight to present to you the proposed work plan for fiscal year '25. I am not asking for any action from the council or direction this evening. I'm providing this as kind of a preview, provide an opportunity for you all to ask any questions, and give you a couple of weeks between now and the next council meeting to ask us any follow-ups that you might have around anything that you see in the work plan. So this work plan is a, I'm sorry. This is kind of the, the last step in the, the planning process for the year. This begins in January with the, with the council retreat. And we take the, you all go through a fairly exhaustive exercise to rank the pillars and the goals from the strategic plan. We take the top 10, and then from the staff perspective, we spend the next six or seven months fleshing out and having conversations with the teams around what tangible steps can we take to move forward and progress those work plan items forward for this upcoming year? Would like to note, so the format of the, the work plan, as you see it, is very similar to what we have shown in the past. The one change that we talked about in January. So in the past, we have included at least one goal from each of the seven pillars in the, the previous iterations of our work plans. And this dates back to the Vision 2030 strategic plan. For this year, we just, we received direction that we wanted to just take the top 10, so the highest rated goals, irrespective of pillar. And so as you look through the proposed draft here, you will notice that not all seven pillars are represented. I do want to emphasize that that does not mean that there is not work being completed and pursued for those pillars that are not represented here. So if you'll recall, we have, so it's pillars one, two, and six that are not shown on the work plan for next year. However, for example, the goal of build Capella's transportation system to connect with regional systems, that was the top-rated goal for pillar six, for transportation. These are examples of things that we are going to be working on in the upcoming years. So we are currently finalizing our autonomous vehicle connection with Incyrus Waters, so that's the regional effort. We will be beginning our reconstruction of Royal Lane. We're continuing to evaluate what impact from a transportation standpoint DART will have when the Silver Line starts up. So those are just three examples of work that is being done in support of pillar six, even though there is not anything on the work plan. And so that is a similar case for pillars one and two as well. For example, in pillar one, we have established Capella as a laboratory of learning. That was the highest rated goal for that pillar. And so that actually was, was new. So it had been since fiscal year '22 for that goal to be rated the highest. But we've got a number of partnerships with our businesses to conduct some DIY courses for our community. We are excited about an expanded partnership with Dallas College. And we will be continuing our partnership with the New Tech students around some of our water sustainability projects and potentially some different projects, as I know they've, they've kind of worked on that one for a number of years now. So that's just an example to make sure that both the council and the community understands that just because it is not on the work plan does not mean that there is no work and that we are pushing those items aside. So having said all of that, I will pause for a moment to answer any questions that you might have. Again, I'm not asking for any decisions tonight. You've got between now and the September 24th meeting to kind of digest this at your leisure. I'm happy to answer any questions between now and then, or I'm happy to answer any questions you have right at this moment. That concludes my presentation, Mayor.
Ramesh?
Thank you, Mayor. Tracy, thanks for the presentation. I have a process-related question.
Sure.
Listening to you, I understand that this, during January, you take the input from the city council. Is there also a follow-up where for any given pillar, let's say there are 10 possible initiatives underneath the pillar, do you guys go and do a cost-benefit analysis and come back? You know, maybe you're measuring it on the total cost, the amount of time it's needed to deliver, how, how many residents are impacted? So there might, might be a rubric that you use. Do you come back and advise the city council of these 10? Here is our recommendation of what is more important?
I am not sure that I wholly understand that question. I, I can say that we do not conduct a separate prioritization, separate and apart from the exercise that you all as a council go through.
Can I try to rephrase the question?
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir. So I understand the part where the city council gives you our priority. Is there a feedback loop where you go and you look at, at the 10 projects that you have, and then you come back and tell us, hey, instead of doing the, these 10, or, you know, instead of the ranking that you gave us, perhaps the ranking should be something else?
We do not do that at the staff.
I see the mayor's.
I'm going to, I'm going to answer that one. No, they don't do that.
Right. And can I ask why not, Mayor?
Because you've asked them to go look at some specific items, and that's what they've gone and addressed. You've gone through, and we go through and prioritize items. And they take that priority list that we've established for them. And then they put together a work plan based around what we've told them to go work on.
And, and Mayor, I understand what you're saying. When we give the direction, at, at that point in time, maybe we don't know exactly what's going to be the cost of delivering that. What's your opinion about taking a look at that after we know the total cost of ownership?
Well, you do that during the budget-setting process, which comes after you set the, the work plan. So that, it, it, it does occur, but it doesn't occur at the time that you're setting the work plan. They have to know, we have to tell them what to go plan on.
Okay.
And then they do come back with a budget to support that. That's during the normal budget process. Because remember, this is not happening, it doesn't happen immediately. We're talking about next year.
Yes, I understand that.
So, you know, we'll, we'll come out with a, a prioritization or, or a project plan for them in January. And then we will start to begin to see the output of that in May.
And, and that's when, based on the budget, we decide what is in, what is out?
We, you have the option at that point to do that, yes? Yes?
Mayor, can I help for just a moment, too?
Please.
Ramesh, if you look at the words that get used in the work plan? Explore, study, evaluate. So the very thing that you're asking is going to be done as part of the process. So there, unless they were doing a capital project like Bill's Royal, most of these are work-generating activities for us to get back to the council to give you the reports to say, okay, we've evaluated, here's what we found. Now what do you want us to do? So we do that after you adopt the work plan. And like I said, on the capital-related projects, those are straightforward. You know what those are going well if they have. So that's.
Thank you, Mike. So on those initiatives that says explore or research, so my understanding is, in fiscal year '25, we will do the exploring and research, but there will be an output of that, which, which could be in the work plan for 2026?
Possibly, if y'all decide that you want to move forward with something related to that. That's why these, that's why for me to say that these things are always evolving, because they may be years in the making of an actual project. And the best reference I can give you is look at 2030. There were so many capital projects in 2030. There was a lot of exploration, study, evaluation. And then eventually, the council and the budget process was approving projects. And over time, those projects got built. It's the same way.
May I take another stab at that?
Yeah.
Thank you. If you'll take a look at, at the page that says pillars three, four, five, and seven, like Mike said, most of those.
Page one, page two, page four.
Page one, okay. Most of those are explore, study, like he said, okay? Then go over to page two, which is sustainable government. Every item there came through the other page in previous years. So like he's saying, you know, this is a study, you know? Yes, we will budget some money for the study, but the actual execution is going to come later down the road.
Mayor, can I explain my question with an example from, from my background? So in, in corporate America, and I'm sure your company does the same way, at the beginning of the budget process, the C-suite may say, these are the 10 important things that I want to focus on. Then the technology team or marketing team, sales team will go in, then analyze the cost of doing that and come back and say, for us to deliver these 10 things, it's going to cost us $200 million. And at that point, C-suite may say, no, I don't have that much money. What can I get for $100 million? And for, to make that decision, we'll need to know what each of those initiatives cost, their importance, and things like that. And that's where I'm coming from. Is that a process? We use it in city, or we don't?
So the, it, it's slightly different when you go from corporate America, where you do literally have a fixed amount of income revenue. In reality, you have the ability to set that amount of revenue you want coming in.
Are you talking about in the city?
Yes.
Yes, I, I can understand that.
So that decision is up to you. You get to make that decision.
That part I understand. I think my question is beyond that. Once we set that budget, you know, we, we still have to make the decision, what are the 10 most important things that can fit into the budget, right? And that's what I'm asking. How do we decide, these are the 10 most important things. Is it only based on the priority we're setting now? Or do we also take into consideration the cost of delivering that?
All the above. And in fact, what you'll find is, many times when you come up with this list, we will take a look at it and go, we can't do that this year. We're going to have to defer it till next year. And that's a very, that is not uncommon at all.
Okay.
We, we deferred some of the major roadways for years, if I'm remembering correctly. And those, those are the, I mean, we actually deferred Andy Brown Park renovation back 10 years ago for a couple of years. And Beltline was on hold for six years, seven years. We actually did a, a temporary overlayment just to give us a little additional time. So those are, those are all things, those are all tools that we have in our tool chest that we can use. All right, thank you. You said you were done, but we're still talking, so.
Is that my cue?
Not at all. Anybody have any other questions for Tracy? So this is not directly related to this topic, but in the next week or two, you will be getting the packet of the city managers' review forms that we will be using about six months from now. I just want you guys to have a copy in advance. I don't think we, I don't think we sent out the, we may have sent out the most recent copy, but we will send out another copy. So yes, even though we're just starting our new year, it's time to start for next year. Well, actually, we're not even into the new year yet. We've still got three weeks to go. All right. Anybody have anything else? Anybody have anything else? Well, the time is 6:52. We're at the end of work session, and we will move into the regular session of the Capella City Council at 7:30 in the council chambers.
Good evening, everybody. The time is 7:31 PM, and we're going to move into the regular session of the Capella City Council. Just as a reminder, persons wishing to speak during our citizens' appearance must sign the appropriate register located outside the council chambers and list your residence address. This evening, we have Jataveda Gesedupa with the Allies Interfaith Group to give our invocation, and then we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance, so please rise.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, and thank you to the entire Capella City Council Board and everyone present here this evening. I am Jataveda, and it's my great honor to represent the Capella Interfaith Group to offer a Hindu prayer tonight, a little, very short. I will not take up a lot of your time by ground as to why I chose this prayer for tonight. Last Saturday, September 7th, marked the beginning of the Hindu festive season with Ganesha Jaturthi. Lord Ganesha, in the Western world known as the elephant god, we started celebrating his birthday last Saturday, and it is a festival marked with a lot of pouring of enthusiasm and devotion for 10 days. Today being the fourth day, I will recite a short prayer of four lines in Sanskrit and follow it up by a translation in English. And I do light this with a little ceremonious candle that we light during any prayer. Om Vakratunda Mahakaya Surya Koti Samaprabha Nirvignam Kurume Deva Sarvakaryeshu Sarvada Om. Oh, Lord, with a curved trunk and a massive body, we pray to you, as with your aura of the brilliance of thousands of suns, we pray that we are freed from any obstacles and hindrances that may come in the way of our work today and forever. Thank you, and may the God bless each one of us and protect us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which expands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. I'd like to invite Dylan Hernandez and any friends here tonight to come down and join This is item number six, a proclamation. Whereas older Americans are significant members of our society, investing their wisdom and experience to help and enrich and strengthen their community, and whereas the Capella Senior and Community Center has acted as a catalyst for mobilizing the creativity, energy, vitality, and commitment of the older citizens of Capella, and whereas through the wide variety of services, programs, and activities, the Capella Senior and Community Center empowers adults 50 and over of Capella to contribute to their own health and well-being, and whereas the Capella Senior and Community Center will continue to affirm the dignity, self-worth, and independence of adults 50 and over in Capella by tapping their experiences, skills, and knowledge, enabling their continued contributions to our community. Now there, now therefore, I, Wes Mays, Mayor of the City of Capella, do proclaim the month of September as Senior Citizens Month in the City of Capella, and I encourage all citizens to recognize the special contributions of the senior center members and the special efforts of the staff who work there every day to enhance the well-being of older citizens in our community. In witness thereof, I've set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Capella to be affixed this 10th day of September, 2024. So, thank you very much. Excuse me. You know, this is one of the, this is one of the most passionate groups in town, and I know that you guys do that every day, and the energy and enthusiasm in the senior center is just unbelievable. So do you have a few words you'd like to say?
Yes, thank you all. I want to break down a little bit of what's going on this month. So on Friday, this last Friday, Kelly Luther came over from PD and called Bingo for us, and then we had Melanie from The Village come over and help out as well. This Friday, the 13th, we will be, we will be having Melina Healthcare getting ready for flu season, kind of letting everybody know what they can get ready for there. Then the 18th and the 20th will be games and coloring in the lobby, and then the last week of the month, we will have our social media challenge. So all this information is on the website under the Senior Center tab on there for any more information. So thank you, guys, for your support. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I believe our Mayor Pro Tim has a little something to add, mainly because you have a stepfather as a result of the Senior Center.
Yeah.
Or something like that, right?
Somehow, my family grew because of the Senior Center. So, no, I just want to say, thank you so much for all that the Senior Center does, providing community for our senior group here in town is absolutely amazing. You guys run an awesome facility, and I love getting to come over every month and give the council update and kind of the city update about what's going on. I continue to, you know, welcome and invite our council members to come visit with me on that. I know Councilmember Prem Kumar has been coming over quite a bit and actually covered for me last month while I was out of town for work, so appreciate you doing that. But just want to say, thank you so much again for all of the hard work, the commitment, the excellence, and hopefully, I'm not going to add any more family members on that, but got mom married off a couple of weeks ago, so very excited about that. But thank you, guys, for also opening the facility to host that wedding as well. It was absolutely fantastic.
If you're going to add any more family members, I think Amanda would be a little upset about that.
Yeah, no, you're not wrong about that.
Councilmember Hinojosa Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. So I remember when the Senior Center was first opened, and it's been really exciting to see it grow, and just to see the community embrace it. So thank you for all that you do. Dylan, welcome as our new director. So I just wanted to say, thank you, welcome. You've got a great group of not only staff, but amazing community leaders and just community participants that love going to the Senior Center, and I love all the activities. Even sometimes, my kids come and get involved, and I just think it's been a great facility and a place for people to come together and be a part of our community. So thank you all for what you do, and I'm glad that we have this small opportunity to thank you in person.
Item number seven is a proclamation naming National Night Out on Tuesday, October 1st, and providing council support and endorsement. Officer Kelly Luther and your small group of friends.
Just a little, little group.
Hey, I need to call Dylan back up here real quick. Where did he run off to? I gave you the wrong proclamation.
He's running out there. Congratulations on that.
Yeah. I started doing a pre-read of it, and it sounded like the one I'd read just before, so I thought something was wrong there. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, whereas the National Association of Town Watch is sponsoring the 41st annual edition of an important nationwide crime and drug prevention event on October 1st called National Night Out, and whereas the National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for Capella, Texas to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police and community drug prevention efforts, and whereas the City of Capella is celebrating the 33rd anniversary of participating in this great crime prevention program, and whereas it is essential that all citizens of Capella, Texas be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact of their participation that they can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in Capella, Texas, and whereas police-community partnerships, neighborhood awareness and safety, and cooperation are important themes of National Night Out, and whereas Neighborhood Crime Watch plays a vital part in assisting the Capella Police Department through the joint crime prevention efforts in Capella. Now therefore, I, Wes Mays, Mayor of the City of Capella, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, October 1st, 2024, as National Night Out in the City of Capella, Texas. In witness thereof, I've set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Capella to be affixed this 10th day of September, 2024. So Kelly, I'm assuming you're going to be the spokesperson for this?
I think Chief was going to take the honors, but I will, I can.
You guys are going to duke, you can duke it out.
Yes.
All right. So before, before I hand the mic over to the chief, National Night Out is very, very special to me. When we first moved into the community in 2000, we didn't know anybody in our neighborhood. We absolutely had no friends, no, no, we knew nothing, and it was the first National Night Out that we got to know all 35 houses in our neighborhood. Councilmember Prem Kumar now lives two doors down from where I used to live, and they're still doing National Night Out, and to me, it was a best way to get to know our neighbors. So thank you, guys, very much for doing this. I'll give you this in a moment, but I'm going to give you the microphone first. Is that okay?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
You can do whatever you want, sir. Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. National Night Out is a huge night for Capella, because we believe strongly that it takes the whole community to keep this community safe, and this community keeps coming back year after year and getting stronger and stronger. Last year, we had our lowest crime rates to date, and right now, we're on target to even beat that date, or those rates, not date. A safe community, yes, the police are involved, and the men and women behind me, they work their tails off every day to do their part, but this community is also a larger part of that, because they come to us, and they collaborate with us, and they partner with us, and so it's, we feel the support of the community, and we really hope that the community feels our support. National Night Out is just a reminder of what a great community we are. You get to meet your police officers, your city officials, and we get to meet you. It's a great night for us, and we look forward to it. Yes, we, we won some awards. Last year, we were number one in the state of Texas, number three nationally, and hopefully we can beat that. We have about, close to 80, maybe a little over 80 block parties ready to go, so it's a testament to the hard work of Kelly Luther here. She spent the whole year putting this thing together, so I appreciate everything you do, Kelly, and appreciate the support, Mayor and Council, and we'll see y'all out there on October 1st.
Thank you very much, Chief. Councilmember Hinojosa Smith.
Yes. Thank you, guys, so much. It is such an exciting time of year when we do National Night Out. Kind of like the mayor said, I mean, when I first moved here, this was an event that has really grown over the years, and it could not be successful if we didn't have each and every one of you behind it, and really putting together the activities and exciting the community about it. And so I love that we're of, we have a competitive spirit, because we have won a few awards, and so I love that. But I think most importantly, it's the connections that we have and our, the fact that every year, we have more and more, I guess, events and parties, and the fact that our community actually looks forward to this. They want to get to know each other, and you see it. You see it on social media, where people connect and they're looking out for each other, and while, you know, at the end of the day, we love the fact that we have our officers and they're accessible, we also know that our community is looking out for each other, and it's because you guys have enabled us and provided us that support. So to each and every one of you, thank you for what you do, and for those officers who aren't here today, just want to say thank you as well.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Neves.
Thank you, Mayor. No, I, again, echo very much what Councilmember Brianna Hinojosa Smith just said, but I just want to kind of tell like a personal tale about this. So I moved into a new home almost two years ago, and low and behold, I found out that my neighborhood did not do a National Night Out block party, so I will not be out on patrol visiting block parties, because I signed up to be a block captain to host our own party, because I think that this is incredibly important. We need to get the word out about National Night Out. So I want to thank you, guys, for continuing to do everything that you do. I'm trying to do my part to make sure that National Night Out comes to our neighborhood, and anybody who's listening and watching, make sure you guys do your part, attend your block party, or it's not too late, you can still sign up for one, right?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. So make sure you guys are doing that, and let's support this amazing initiative. Thank you, guys, for all you do.
Sorry, just, hey, Mayor, I said thank you to all the officers, but I failed to include our volunteers. Like, our CPAC is amazing, and they are out there as an extension of our officers, so I just wanted to say thank you for all you do.
Item number eight is our citizens' appearance. Persons wishing to speak must sign the register and list your residence address. Presentations by individuals shall be limited to two minutes each. An individual's speaker time may be extended for an additional two minutes with the approval of the majority of the council members present. Person signed to speak will be called in the order that they signed up. No personal attacks. Many speakers shall be made against any member of the council, mayor, individual, group, or corporation. There will be no comments or deliberation from the City Council due to the Texas Open Meetings Act. Once the timer sounds at two minutes, the city secretary will cut in and make the request to the mayor and the council if they would like to expend the speaker's time for an additional two minutes. Tonight, we do have one person that is signed to speak, and that is Mr. Thomas Burrows.
Thomas Burrows, 138, WinPage. Don't start that till I give you my address. WinPage, right. 23 years ago, a friend of my wife's had this guy that she was dating, and he was a commuter airline pilot, and he was flying in New York City, and this other flight comes along, and the air traffic control people say, hey, you know, you're about to run into each other. And so when they say expedite, 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 that means move your butt really fast, and there was a couple of broken bones in his airplane, but he almost could have taken out Flight 11. I don't know how many thousands of lives that would have saved, but anyway. We're here talking again about coenforcement. The tree on Sandy Lake, when it, the limb breaks and goes through the window of somebody there by the 7-Eleven store, and you guys get sued because you didn't do anything about it? Trust me, I'll be there in court pointing this out. And it also seems like that there seems to be a dispensation given for certain people in this town, including some members up here, that either they're associations, groups they're with, or their own personal property, that don't need to trim the trees, remove a dead tree, stuff like that. And, you know, since I drive through into my neighborhood, and I see this every single day, it kind of bothers me. Also, I want to point out that Capella Fire EMS managed to get lost with my wife back in December, when she was on, being taken to the emergency room. How in the heck does EMS get lost? Trust me, is that the best we can do, people? We went to the airport, I mean, thought maybe they're going to put her on an airplane and fly her away. They got lost, and I never got unpolished and riding.
Thank you very much for your comments. Item number nine is our consent agenda. This is routine in nature and generally enacted in one motion. These items have been previously approved through the budget or passed council action. Any item may be pulled and considered separately. Full descriptions are available on the screen. Counselor, are there any items that you would like to see pulled, or do you have any questions concerning the consent agenda? Seeing none, I will accept a motion. Councilmember Carroll.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda, item number nine, A through J.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilmember Hill. All in favor?
Hinoza Smith, Carroll Nevels, Prem Kumar, Matthew Hill in favor, none opposed. The motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number 10. Oh, I, I looked up there and I, all right, did we have a vote from this, Councilmember? Jim, we just had?
Yes, I voted in favor of the consent agenda items. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
I actually looked at the screen to see if you were up there, and I decided you were off working or something. Sorry about that. Just as a note to the audience, we do have Councilmember Walker, who is participating by Zoom tonight, so, welcome, Jim.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item number 10 is consider approval awarding bid Q0824-01 Emergency Water Systems Interconnects to Telus Consulting in the amount of $1,284,692.3, funded from bond funds and authorizing the city manager to sign all necessary documents. Mr. Garza, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you. The next several items on the agenda are mine, so I'll be up here for a few minutes. This item is related to our overall water system redundancy project. Yeah, there we go. There we go. There we go. All right. So, yes, this is related to our overall system redundancy project, water system redundancy project. Now, the City of Capella receives treated water from one source, which is the Dallas Water Utilities, and at one location, which is our Village Parkway pump station over on the east side of town, and then pumps the treated water into the distribution system out to our customers. This project was developed to establish other emergency sources of treated water in the event the city is unable to receive it at our Village Parkway pump station. Once complete, the city would be able to operate under a low-demand scenario until normal operations are restored at the Village Parkway pump station. Now, in 2015, as part of a study for redundancy, one option was to create a secondary pump station, to be redundancy, to our existing pump station, on Starleaf, to allow for that station redundancy. At that time, the cost was going to be around $17 to $19 million to construct that, and direction was given to reevaluate, reevaluate the options to provide system redundancy at a lower cost. Therefore, in 2020 and 2021, the city sold bonds in total amount of $10 million for the purpose of the water system redundancy project. Part of that system redundancy project was to partner with our neighboring cities in an effort to provide backup emergency connections. In 2022, city council approved interlocal agreements with the City of Lewisville and the City of Grapevine for the purpose of these water emergency connections. Now, these connections will be for emergency situations only, and will enhance our reliability and resiliency during a specific event. We will have three total connections, one with Grapevine off of Bethel Road, near the city limit, and two with Lewisville, which is one off North Entap and Highland Drive, and the other one off North MacArthur and Lake Vista. So, this item tonight is to award the construction contract to Telus. We advertised and received two bids, and Telus was the low bidder, and they have done similar projects previously, including with the City of Grapevine. Now, the total project cost is about 1.28 million, or is $1.28 million, and will take 180 days to complete. And again, this effort is to enhance our reliability and resiliency of our water system. Now, just to show you, these are the three locations on a map, West Bethel, North Entap, and North MacArthur. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Councilmember Matthew.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Garza, for the presentation. In the memo, it says, December 2022, city council approved the interlock agreements. When did we establish this line with Lewisville and Grapevine?
So, we started looking, studying the options for connections to these, these cities back in 2020, 2021. And then, we identified that they have the capability to provide us with these connections, and so that's when we signed the interlocal agreements in 2022. And so, from that point forward, we were able to move forward, design these systems, and so to, this, this contract is to install those connections in these three locations.
Okay, so we don't have the connection established yet?
That's what this, this contract is to construct those. That's correct.
This is going to do. Okay. Thank you.
I had a, Councilmember, Councilmember Carroll.
Sure, thank you. I appreciate us spending a lot of time and money to come up with a redundancy system to make the, the water system safe, so I'm very supportive of this project. Just more from a logistics standpoint, does it completely, I'm assuming it doesn't completely replace, like if we, if our pump station went down and we had to revert to these, these interconnects, would it be, would we be able to replace, completely replace, like as much water as we normally would out of the pump station?
So, depending on the time of the year, obviously, in the summer months, we probably wouldn't be, be allowed to pull water from Lewisville and Grapevine because they will be under the same conditions. So, the idea is, in the event, wintertime or some other time when the pump station goes down, they have the capacity to provide us with our winter peak demand, which is about 8 million gallons, and so we'll be able to sustain that for several days while we get the pump station back up in order.
And does it, this is more just a logistics question, but does it, does it, do we just fill our own tanks? Is that what we're in, is that what we'll end up doing it?
It'll run, it'll run through the system, and then the excess will fill the tanks.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
So, my question was very similar. During peak demand during the summer, would we go into a, you know, an emergency water rationing plan, or?
Yes, that is, that is what the process would be today and moving forward, is if, if we had an outage at VP, similar to what we had last summer, we would go into an emergency rationing plan.
June 28th.
June 28th. That's right.
Yeah. I think we remember that well. Okay. Thank, and would Lewisville and Grapevine have capacity during peak summer demand to give us that, or would we be rationed even from, from there?
We would be rationed from there. It, it depends on their demand as well. If they are, if they have the capacity to supply, they'll supply us with what they can, but, but more than likely, it wouldn't be our full demand requested.
And I take it that our existing pump stations would be used to keep, keep the pressure in our systems up to?
That's correct.
Okay. Counsel, any, Councilmember Prem Kumar.
Thank you, Mayor. Mike, thanks for the update, and I want to second Councilmember Carroll. I think water is a critical need, and this one-time investment will give the redundancy for Capella for 20, 30-plus years, so I think it's a good investment. Thanks for taking care of this. Thank you.
Councilmember Carroll.
Sorry, I had another question right quick, and maybe I missed this. Does it, is it work both ways? Like, will, do Grapevine and Lewisville also be able to draw from us if they needed to?
Yes, there is capabilities for it to flow both ways.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Counsel, Councilmember Hill.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve item number 10.
Thank you. Do I have, and seconded by Mayor Protem Nevels. All in favor?
Walker, Hinoza Smith, Carroll Nevels, Prem Kumar, Matthew Hill in favor, none opposed. The motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number 11 is consider approval of guaranteed max price agreement between the City of Capella and Burn Construction Services for the construction of the City of Capella Service Center Improvements Project in the amount of $10,208,609, funded with proceeds from the Certificate of Obligation Bonds Bond Series 2024, and authorizing the city manager to sign all necessary documents. Mr. Garza, once again.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Council. So, the next three items are companion piece for the service center, so I'm going to do a brief presentation on the next three items. So, items 12, yes, 12 and 13 as well will be part of this presentation. There we go. Thank you. Yeah, so items 11, 12, and 13 are all, are related to the Service Center Phase 3 project.
Why don't you go ahead and ride, read 12 and 13 into the record so we can vote on those all at one time?
Yes. So, item number 12 is consider approval of award into contract with Kleinfelder for the materials testing services associated with construction of the Service Center Improvement Project in the amount of $60,0475, funded with proceeds from the Certificate of Obligation Bonds Series 2024, and authorizing the city manager to sign all necessary documents. And item 13 is to consider approval of an amendment to the master agreement with Gallagher Construction Services for the construction management of the Service Center Improvement Project in the amount of $409,412, funded with proceeds from the Certificate of Obligation Bonds Series 2024, and authorizing the city manager to sign all necessary documents. Okay, so, the original service center was constructed in about 2001, 2002, and it houses the public works first responders as well as the community experience operations staff, which is about a total of 70 to 80 staff members. It's also where we store all of our large equipment, vehicles, mowers, and stockpile of materials. These are the folks that maintain our park system, medians, our water and sewer system, our streets, our traffic signals, our facilities, and our fleet. As you may recall, Phase 1 and Phase 2 of the Service Center project was in 2015, which included site work, paving, covered areas for equipment and material, material storage, as well as an auction storage area. Now, these are the ones shown in white there for Phase 1 and Phase 2. The yellow, the ones shown in yellow are part of the original construction from 2001, 2002, and then the one shown in black is the proposed building. The current facility does not have a public-facing restroom. The current locker rooms and showers are not adequate for both male and females, and we also currently house staff members in the outbuildings because there's not enough room inside the existing facility. Now, these staff members at the Service Center are the first responders that get called out when there's a sewer backup in your house, or a water main break in the street, or, or a leak to your house that we shut off the water, or during an ice storm event, folks come in to pre-treat and to treat during the ice storm event. And so, and of course, all these don't happen during work hours. A lot of times, never, it fails, it happens at night, overnight, and so sometimes folks come in and may have to stay the night or work late into the night, and so we don't really have a place for them to rest or, or sleep. So, based on all these needs, for Phase 3, space planning began in 2017 with an architectural space assessment that continued to evolve through 2021. The architectural recommendation was to build a separate office structure to house offices, workrooms, traffic management space, and other meeting spaces, and to, and to remodel the existing structure to support field staff. City council approved a design contract in 2022 with Park Hill Architects to design a new service center building and remodel of the existing building. Now, tonight's first item on the agenda is related to the Service Center for the approval of the guaranteed max price for a construction manager at risk, Burn Construction, in the amount of $10.2 million. In addition to the Burn contract, we are also working with Gallagher, our construction program manager for cost estimating and program management. We will also be asking for approval of an amendment to Gallagher's master contract to include the product, to include this project, and for materials testing contract approval with Kleinfelder. Outside of the GMP with Burn, there will also be furniture fixture and equipment purchases that council will see at a later date, and these are typical on projects in routine in nature for new buildings. And just a reminder, the city sold 12.5 million in bonds this year for this project. Now, the next few slides are quick renderings of what the building will look like inside and out. The proposed is the upper left, and the current is the bottom right. For those that were able to tour the Service Center, you may recall some of these pictures, and for those that didn't, here's a chance to see what the current, the existing facility looks like. So, this view here is looking on the northwest, looking at the northwest side facing building. The architectural features fit in with Life Safety Park and Old Town. Included in the new building are a training room that was lost when the space at 500 Southwestern was repurposed, a public-facing restroom in the lobby with safety and security aspects, an ADA-compliant locker room space for both men and women, and we were able to move staff inside to new spaces and out of the outbuildings, including our traffic management center. We're also being able to provide flex space for those that may need to spend the night during ice events or other catastrophic events. So, this project does address the space needs for both public works and community experiences. Now, this next slide shows the front entrance, which faces north of the new facility. This next one is the, the facing west towards Life Safety Park, so you can see existing and then the proposed. Here's an example of a rendering of the training room, existing and proposed. This is a remodel of the existing Service Center building to show another business center operation room here, existing and proposed. And then, this is the, the break room for the new facility for the staff. Now, this project, if approved, will begin, construction would, would, will start in late September, and will take approximately one month to complete for Phase 1, which is constructing the, the parking expansion on the north side, highlighted there in that, that bluish-green color. Once that is complete, staff will begin parking there so that construction of the new facility, which will be Phase 2, can begin. This phase will start in hopefully late October, early November, if approved, and will take approximately 12 months to complete. This includes the construction of the new building, and once the new building is complete, then we will move to Phase 3, which is renovation of the existing service center facility. Phase 3 is anticipated to begin in the fall of 2025, and would take approximately four to six months to complete. Now, this includes the renovation of the existing service center, and once that is complete, the entire project will be complete, which is expected in, in spring of 2026. This just shows the cost summary of where we're at today, and so, again, city council approved and sold bonds this year for 12.5 million. The architect's total design fee came, has come out to 1.1 and change. Burn's guaranteed max price for tonight is 10.2. Materials testing contract is for 60,000. The construction management contract is for 409,000, and the proposed furniture fixture and equipment is, is approximately 400,000, giving us a total of 12.25 million, all-in cost for the project. And so, in summary, over the past year, estimates were completed at the 30, 60, and 90% phase of the plans, and the final numbers are in line with the early estimates of about $10 million. Both Park Hill, the architects, and Gallagher, the program manager, have reviewed the numbers and agree that they are accurate for the project. Approval of tonight's guaranteed maximum price with Burn will allow the project to move forward to construction. And as a reminder, outside of the GMP, there will also be furniture fixtures and equipment purchases that council will see at a later date. In addition to the Burn contract, item number 12 is to consider approval of award a contract with Kleinfelder for materials testing. Kleinfelder is an approved geotechnical engineering and testing firm selected by the city through qualification-based selection process, and we've worked successfully with them on other projects. And item 13 is to consider approval of an amendment to Gallagher's master contract to include this project. Gallagher Construction Services has a master agreement with the City of Capella, and each new facility construction project requires a separate contract amendment to be executed. It is advantageous to the project to include the program and construction management and owner's representation, representation as part of the construction manager at risk form of project delivery. Gallagher's scope also includes field visits and oversight during construction, as well as pricing review, schedule management, progress review, and owner's representation, and Gallagher has successfully assisted the city with completion of numerous past projects, including most recently Fire Station 4 and currently Fire Station 5. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any questions? Councilmember Walker.
Thank you, Mayor. Great presentation, as always, Mike. Couple of questions on the guaranteed max price for the construction, is that guaranteed all the way through the completion of the project?
That is correct.
And what about the, like, the outlined buildings, like, the ones, I guess, that would be on the south side, as you look at the front of the main building, that, where so many of the other staff were, had been working, that were located basically in a garage where we put some sheet rock walls in? Is any work going to be done to those buildings as well, or how is that going to work out?
Those, those facilities will continue to be operated to house inventory and that sort of thing, because those folks will be moved into the, either the new facility or the existing remodeled facility, and so we will be able to utilize those facilities as, as additional storage space.
So, are we going to have any of our employees and staff working outside of the main building, the, including the new construction and the remodel of the old?
No, sir.
Okay, good, good. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Matthew.
Thank you, Mayor. Question, how many bids did we receive for this project?
So, this, this is a different type of selection process that we went through for securing this procurement method. Construction manager at risk is, is a method we'd go for large-scale facility-type projects, and so- And so we, we put out an RFQ, or an RFP, to request for proposals and qualifications. And Burn was the contractor selected for this project based off of value and past experience. And so it's, it's, it wasn't a bid process in the sense that we select low bidder. So Burn is the construction manager at risk that worked with our architect throughout the process to help design this project. In turn, they take, they assume the risk for the project, and so that's why we're here tonight for the guaranteed maximum price is the price that they're going to do. So it's, it's not your typical bid, designed bid, build project.
So process like this, how do we know that numbers are accurate?
So that's why we have the architect and we have the program manager, Gallagher, to assist us walk through the project with us and confirm that the bids, the pricing that they provide is in line with industry standards, and so that we're getting the best value and the best product possible. The other thing is, with the guaranteed maximum price, any overages or any, that's within the scope, is that their cost? The city will not bear any costs in that. And any savings, we get savings in return. And so, and so that, for this type of project, this is, this is the preferred method for the delivery.
All right, could you please go back to the summary slide?
This one or this one?
Yeah, this one, yeah. So it says furniture fixation, it meant $400,000. In your presentation, you said there will be additional cost?
That, this includes that additional cost, so we haven't selected the furniture yet. And so we have a budget of about 400,000 for the furniture, so at a later date, we'll select the furniture and we'll come back to council. But it's included in that. There won't be an additional to that.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protem Nevels?
Thank you, Mayor. No, I just, I wanted to say, you know, this plan, I know we've had several discussions, very supportive of taking care of our public works department and our first responders that are out there doing the dirty work, as, as we might say. So I'm really, really happy to see this come forward and start to see actual progress happen. So I'm, I'm just very happy with the project and the proposal, so look forward to voting for yes on this one right here.
I had a question for you. It looked like that we're going to be eating into some of the front parking lot from the existing building. And I know that we're adding some parking over to the side, so is, is the employee parking going to be encouraged to move over to the, what is that, the north side?
It'll be the north, north side, yes, sir.
So?
That's what, that's what the employee parking will be on the north side.
Okay, thank you. See, mine was easy.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? Councilmember Carroll?
Thank you, Mayor. I will move to approve items 11, 12, and 13.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councilmember Hill? All in favor?
Walker, Hinaoza Smith, Carol Nevels, Prem Kumar, Matthew Hill in favor, none opposed. The motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, item number 14 is our city manager's report with project updates, future agendas, and direction from the work session. Mr. Lann?
Thank you, Mayor. Based on some earlier discussion this evening, tomorrow, I'm going to ask Ashley to send out a quorum check for the September 24 meeting. There's a possibility we may not have enough for actual work session, so just be aware of that. But it looks like we should have enough for the council meeting, but we need to get that confirmation as quickly as possible. As far as items, the kiosk was back, brought back online on Monday, and information's been sent out through all our channels to let people know that they can begin to use the kiosk. So the library drop box is no longer to be used for water bill payments. South Beltline, the digital sign is expected to be up and operational by the end of October. Woodhurst, the contractor is working on alley paving on Woodhurst now, west of the park. Once completed, they will begin to open the southern lane and begin concrete removal on the northern lane. So progress being made there. Dart, they completed the concrete pour on South Capel northbound lane. Ceiling was done today and should be open tomorrow. Once they open, they will close southbound lane to perform the concrete street replacement at the railroad crossing. The southbound work should be completed by the 26th of September. On Fire Station number five, the utility work is nearing completion, and they are working on the concrete driveway interest off of Moore Road. Magnolia Park Trail, they had a pre-construction meeting today, so they anticipate begin, to begin work within the next month, so sometime in October. And staff has been in communication with the neighborhood. They've been extremely complimentary towards staff's level of communication. The water line repair on Southwestern is complete and the lane is back open. Mayor, that completes my update.
Thank you very much. Item number 15, the mayor and council reports on recent and upcoming events. I have two items here. Just as a reminder, tomorrow is September 11th. We will be having our Remembrance Day ceremony outside the town center, outside in front of the flagpoles. Our fire and police departments will be participating. The public is invited, and there will be a reading of all of those who lost their lives, and we are all invited to participate in that. Hope to see you there. Oh, thank you very much. The, the time is 8:30 a.m. in the morning, and it lasts for approximately an hour. The city is currently seeking passionate individuals to be part of our 10 boards and commissions that help guide the development, future needs, and regulations, and more for our city of Capel. Applications are now open on the city website. These applications will be accepted through Friday, September 20th, 2024, and must be completed during this time period for you to be considered. Please consider applying for our, any one of our boards and commissions. Item number 16 are public service announcements concerning items of community interest with no council action or deliberation permitted. Counsel, any public PSAs? Mayor Protem Nevels?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to remind the community that Capel ISD, which is, just a reminder, is a separate governmental entity from the city council, they are hosting a VADER information session tomorrow night at 6:00 p.m. at Capel Middle School West. So that is for, VADER stands for voter approval, taxpayer ratification, election. So that will be on the November 5th, 2024 ballot, so you can find out information about what that might mean and implications for, any sort of tax implication that that may apply to your tax bill. But just want to make sure the community was aware of that information session. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have any other PSAs? Seeing none, there was no necessary action from the executive session, so therefore, there being no further business before this body, we are adjourned at 8:18 p.m.
Thank you all.